One minute, right?
Yep. I'm watching it.
Ready?
Okay.
The June 3, 2025 meeting of the City Council is called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Redpath, can you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Cox?
Here.
Alderman Gregory?
Here.
Alderman Williams?
Here.
Alderman Rockford?
Here.
Alderman Purchase?
Here.
Alderman Nitriano? Alderman Carlson?
Here.
Ald- Alderman Connolly?
Present.
Alderman Donlin?
Here.
Ald- Alderman Hanauer?
Here.
Mayor Buscher?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, clerk. The civility pledge, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. We have no proclamations or presentations this evening, so we will move right into the agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the May 6, 2025 regular City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Chair will now entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, your voting will be open. There we go, voting is now open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with nine voting yes, none voting no. Agenda item number 2025-191 remains tabled or in committee. Are we okay with that still? Okay. Then the next item on the agenda is item 2025-233, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement with Helping Hands of Springfield utilizing Home Investment Partnership Program, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, for an amount not to exceed $1,115,000 for supportive services, TBRA, operating expenses, and capacity building from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2027, for the Pl- Office of Planning and Economic Development. The Chair will entertain a motion to place the agenda on final passage.
Mayor, I propose.
We have a motion and a second. Alderman Gregory? Discussion?
This 233, correct? All right, um, I move to introduce the proposed amendment number one.
So you are, Alderman Gregory, Ward 2, is proposing an amendment. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. So discussion on the amendment first. Is there any discussion on the amendment from any of the council members? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? Did you want to say something, Alderman?
Sure.
Alderman Gregory.
Um, yes, I- this- this particular amendment and Mr. Mordock and anything I miss is to reduce funding to this particular recipient by $350,000. It also calls our, um, encourages our same process to go back out for open bid to allow others, based on the following reasons. First off, I don't know who changed the rule, but home ARPA funds, these particular ARPA funds are restricted to people who pull off the coordinated entry. I've had calls for- from others who take all women, and they wasn't afforded the opportunity to get any of this funding. We've had to call them at night with them and their kids, and they're the only ones that take them. So others should be able to have opportunity to help us out in areas that we need to help. Just last Tuesday, when we spoke on this, when I left downtown, I was at an event, when I spoke on 422 East Link, and I had to call a gentleman from Helping Hands about a gentleman who'd had no power. He's in our apartment that had no power. And guess what? This landlord, he wouldn't budge until the guy told him, well, our Alderman called me about it. Now they're there the next day. We have to do something different. We have to give others opportunity. This doesn't stop them from doing anything. Alderman Carlson, I heard you on the radio. You've been talked to the new director. Roy, you talked to him?
No.
You ever talk to him?
Yeah.
Wait, 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 whoa, 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 I got the floor. Oh, I know you want to defend him, I get it. This is privileged. I'm just, I'm about to articulate for you. Give me a second. So, here it is, and I'll give the county credit, at least, they had the decency to call me and Roy when we had to approve the zoning for the building, even to be there, and sit down and talk with us about what it's supposed to be. This new director, other Aldermen has met with him. We ain't never talked to him. Even from last week to this day, we didn't get one call. You know why? Last week, I seen he go out, he was mad, and we followed him, because the thinking is, it don't matter what them nigger else say. It don't matter. We gonna do it anyway. That's why he called out west. He called us, he didn't give us that type of respect. Here we are, pushing off, what, $2.2 million, with the main focus about housing. But next week, we about to spend another, what, million to tear down housing. We should be putting the money into refixing it, so- so they ask them where to go. That's why I brought this amendment. They're still gonna operate, they're still gonna, oh, do what they do. Where's the county's money? Make them help. That was the whole idea of them going over there, so they could help. So that's why I brought this amendment, is- is- is to reduce it and give others a chance that are vital in our community, that are housing people in our community. They might not pull off the coordinated entry list, but when Helping Hands needs them, they call them and they have to go there. Families, people with kids. Think about that. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second for the amendment. Any other discussion on the amendment? Alderman Carlson?
Was not gonna talk, but I'll let the Alderman know that I took the initiative to call.
I'm sure.
Robert, I took the initiative. He was new to town in January. I took the initiative. Anybody else can take the initiative as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion on the amendment? This is just the amendment. Alderman Gregory?
Yes, and back to the Aldermen. You want to get bad, I can get bad. You better do your history. Back to the Aldermen. Had we known they had a new director for the fourth time in six years?
That's not true.
Three, four, count it out. Erica Smith, who's next, after her?
Can I speak, Mayor?
The one young lady? I'm not done speaking. The one young lady with- with short hair? They just had another one? And now him? That's four. We- me and you both been here, what, six and a half years? Those are the- they've had multiple directors. I get it, they donate to you. I get it, I know, I get it. I get it. I get it, Ann. But you know of this apartment complex that I'm talking about? I went back through the records. I sent that to you. We talked about it, it wasn't in your ward anymore. But we still got people staying out there in substandard housing that they shouldn't be staying in, from this group. Thank you.
Alderwoman Connolly?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman, I will say, I don't believe that Fifth Street has donated to me. I think that they're the kind of an organization that's not allowed to donate to political campaigns. I've certainly donated to them, and I will continue to do, as I've donated to Fifth Street Renaissance also. Slept in the box, I- I mean, that's, yeah, I think those are important things. I have gotten no direct complaints from anyone in the neighborhood of that- with- with that house. The residents seem to- no, let me- let me just finish, please. The residents seem to be doing well. From what I understand, they've responded to the electrical issues, and they're working with them and trying to find that gentleman an alternative place to stay. It's very important that we do this, and- and I- I respect that you want to see funds going to other organizations, but this is a difficult and complicated job. I've talked to a lot of people. We see the people who do this work, and- and I would- I want, again, I said this last week to Fifth Street, I want to say this to all of the people in this room right now who do this work every day. Your jobs are difficult, you are lifting up our most vulnerable citizens, and I am extraordinarily grateful to you. And I want you to know that I hear from people on a regular basis who appreciate and respect the very hard work that you do. So please know that that- that is- that's a consistent theme, and- and yeah, it's been tough. Social work is not easy. It's not an easy job. They had an interim director. We have a new director who's been here for, what, less than five months? Let's give him a chance. We made a decision as a council. We said, we're gonna let our subject matter experts take the lead in addressing what is an extraordinarily complicated topic. Let's let these subject matter experts do this, and the ones that have capacity to care for people, to follow up on them, and to- and to- to work with them in a way that keeps someone who was living in the worst of conditions, people who are living in the street are not having a good day, right? Helping Hands and Fifth Street Renaissance have been doing the hard work for years, for ve- with very little funding from the city, very little. They've run- Help- Helping Hands runs that- that shelter, and we know we need these services. So this is a chance for them to build and expand their capacity, and in the end, in the end, use their expertise to serve the people who are most vulnerable in our community. And I- I thank you all for that. I thank you for your time and your dedication, and, um, so Alderman, I- I appreciate, I understand what you're trying to do, but I want you to know that when it comes to very difficult work like this, I- I am going to rely on the experts who have this history.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Gregory?
Yes, so to follow up, was I wrong on how many directors? I mean, you said I was wrong, but it sounded like I was right in your assessment.
Alderman didn't want anyone-
There was an interim person, right? So-
All right, all right, I get it. Thank you. I- I just wanted to make sure, you know, you were making me out to be a liar, and I just wanted to-
Alderman, I've never called you a liar in an open session.
I just wanted to make- I just, for the record, I just wanted to be correct.
Can I just please be clear? I would not call you a liar at all. Okay? That's not my intention, and that's not where I come from in this. I respect where you're- what you're- where you come from, so please, let's, okay?
So, so again, this is not a, um, take everything from them, they shouldn't deserve anything, but there are other professional organizations, both that have not been doing it long and have been doing it for years as well, who serve a special population that they don't serve. And they should have the opportunity to apply for that funding as well. May I ask, Ms. Amy, how was the notice for funding put out?
Do you want Director Raising to come up? Is that what you want, Alderman?
Whoever would like to, just let us. Absolutely, absolutely. That's a good person to bring.
Welcome, Julia.
Hi, thank you. So, yeah, I manage the program. When we received the funds in 2021, shortly after, we consulted with 18 different agencies and the public. We had public hearings, public notice. That was in 2022 that we did that. And then the home ARP allocation plan was developed based on that information in 2023, March 2023.
Okay, so in March of 2023, did we have those rules on there that only if- if you pull from the coordinated entry list is only, because that's not in the original home ARP funds rules?
Um, the, so the plan was amended in 2024 January, but that was just, we had only allocated in the original plan $300,000 towards housing development, and so we changed that to TBRA, the tenant-based rental assistance, because $300,000 wasn't enough to make a substantial difference in housing development.
I remember that.
Um, and then we also changed the qualifying populations, and then the prioritization tool that we used, but-
So I'm- I'm also, when did the actual rule in writing change from the original rules that, from the feds, when it came to us? Because unless we change that, it's sort of like TIF.
Yeah.
TIF doesn't have a- a match, but we apply a match to it. It's not really in writing, but we apply a match to it.
The rules that came, that when we received the funds, were just what it could be spent on, um, which, you know, is the capacity building, operation expenses, tenant-based rental assistance, and housing development. When we did the plan, we put in the coordinated entry. We wanted to pull off the coordinated entry to make it fair. That way, organizations weren't giving money to who they wanted to, but they had to go off the list of who was next in line to get this funding.
So, and Alderman, one of the key things that we do, as we talk about with any grant, with any funds that are allocated, both state or federally, is there are so many regulations, and in this case, these two entities that we're speaking of, Fifth Street Renaissance and Helping Hands, they were willing to take on the, if you call it a challenge, of making sure that they're providing the documentation needed, following the regulations, and sometimes some organizations don't have the capacity for that. I'm not saying somebody doesn't, but they may not. So they stepped up and said that they were willing, you know, to take on the responsibility, if you will, in layman's term, of making sure that they're following these and making sure that we're using the funds as they're expended, otherwise, we're not going to get any funds. And all of these funds, as federal funds, are also contingent only if we do get the funds and continue to get the funding, and these organizations realize that as well.
Well, home ARP funding probably won't come back in that form, correct? That was from ARPA funds, and it was a little bit set aside for some of these purposes. So, you know, I- I think when we- when we throw, I get where you're going with the coordinated entry thing, but that cuts out some very valuable members, and I don't want to call their name because I don't want to retaliate, I don't want nobody being mad and thinking. But they're reputable. They're- they- they help a- a- a population, so when you- so when we put this rule on there, that cuts out people who only take women and families. That cuts them out from this particular funding, and I think that's a problem. I think that's, we have to think about that. You know, I've been in this situation before, where young kids are out on the streets, nowhere to go at night, they can't go to Helping Hands.
Can I just say that-
Yes, ma'am.
Um, women and children will still be able to receive assistance, but organizations who only deal with women and children, they did not. I met with some of the organizations that only want to deal, and I tried to get them to apply, but they didn't want to participate with the coordinated entry. And I also just want to say that the majority of the funds, we're not just giving away $1.15 million. A million dollars is going directly to those who face housing insecurities. Only a small portion will be going to the organization who's operating, and that's just to cover their operating expenses, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Thank you, Mayor. I, it's always a sticky subject, because I was in the hot seat for a minute after some of these conversations, and I think a lot of light was shedded on how the organizations are ran, and Alderman Gregory said it best, that some people are afraid to come forward to express what's going on, or other individuals and organizations who are actually helping. We're in a tough spot up here, because when we pass this number today, whether Alderman Gregory's amendment fails and it just moves forward, then we're back to square one of, how did y'all spend this money? What did you do? When did you go out? We- we've noticed that right now, we're not seeing anything on Fifth and North Grand, but I do have an actual problem where they have been relocated too, but it just hasn't been out there. And it's like, I'm- I'm just sitting here and evaluating and watching, and, you know, when we talk, we talk about, we're doing work, but sometimes we don't express it to you all enough, what we're doing behind the scenes, and there's been a lot of dialogue, but we still really haven't came up with that solution, or maybe I just haven't been at the table where the solutions are being talked about. So that might be where- where I'm missing out, and maybe need someone from Helping Hands to, I know Alderman Carlson, you said, to reach out, just take the initiative, but I'm pretty open with talking to everybody, and sometimes I don't feel like it's being reciprocated back too, for you to say to me, hey, this is what we're doing, hey, this is where we're going. When we heard last week, I think it was Mr. Frazier, I think Helping Hands go over there, and sometimes they have to wait for over an hour to get picked back up to come back to your facility, but their clothes is being washed there and utilizing a program. There is a lot of people trying to come in and help with these solutions, and we're only hearing about it when it's time for funding to be let out. And if anyone ever hears me, I ask about, hey, can you come back and give us updates? And I know too, the mayor is putting out the reports, some things are changing over, but this is a critical time where we have to make a decision upfront too. So it's nothing to you, with you being new and being, and I think Alderwoman Connolly said, six months now, but we- we do have to make some type of changes, and for that reason, I'm in favor of voting for the amendment, and we talked about it, and we also had people reach out to us too, and all of us around this horseshoe have different relationships. So I know you said you haven't gotten any phone calls, but to hear about the story of the gentleman with no electricity, we all know when somebody, one of us get involved, a call is going to happen quicker. We know that a response is going to come a little bit faster, and when you see that somebody's been sitting like that, especially with me knowing how housing works, you make one phone call, the inspectors are out there, the green tag is on your door, and how did this go unseen? So I- I think that is an issue for me too, especially when I know how it works within our system. So I think taking this chance and moving some of the funds around is the right thing to do, and for those reasons, I will be in support. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Alderman Williams?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As you know, Helping Hands is in Ward 3, and- and as you know, there's been a lot of consta- consternation around how it got there. There, you know, the county is at fault on- on a lot of this relational things that are going on, and that's the difference in Fifth Street and Helping Hands. And why we feel we're connected with Fifth Street and things are going much, much better, and this big move they made in the name of, I'm gonna put it out there on that highway because I want their land, I'm- I'm telling it like it is, because I want the building that they are operating in next to the bus system. I need that side as well, so I'm- I'm gonna swap. Brian McFadden came in, he met with most of us up here, I don't know if you remember, and he tried to sell this idea of the swap, and as Alderman, whose ward it was coming in, he took it like, well, you just don't want it over there. Well, that too, because I had neighborhood associations not want it on there, but I think both organizations do good work. So I don't know where the Alderwoman comes from, like anybody's up here criticizing the work. We're talking about doing things differently. We can't continue to go on and keep doing the same thing over and over and over. Yes, they have a lot of challenges. I know about the challenges, about the changes in directors, the new HR director, all the firings recently. It's a lot going on with Helping Hands, but I also know about these examples that the Aldermen and the Alderwomen are- are sharing that don't fit the product or fit the- the situation, so we have to be open-minded. So we take a pinch and say, we gonna set this aside and allow these other organizations, and I- I think I might name this name, you know, to, because they are doing the work. They can bring the receipts, they are getting it done for us, for the same population, for the same mission, really. It's just that, I guess they're below the low barrier. I don't know how else to say it, and also women or children, maybe. So it ain't about anybody being against Helping Hands or against Fifth Street. Of course, they're gonna still be able to do what they do. We're just trying to do it a little different this year and give others who do the work the same opportunity. Of course, it's gonna be a less, less, less amount, because the traditional players are Helping Hands and Fifth Street Renaissance, but we need to open our minds to how those that fall through the tracks have been been taken care of. It's gonna be a RFP, it's gonna be a fair process, our department's gonna run it, and I think that's why I'll be supporting this amendment, and I encourage you two too, just to try to do something different this year, instead of doing the same old traditional thing, and we have the same old people falling through the cracks. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gregory?
And I'll finish off with this, because no matter how this goes, you know, I, there's some things, and- and I try to just not to talk directly, because I don't want to get anybody in trouble, but- but I will tell you, everybody's acting like this thing is running perfectly. We got women who are case managers going to these places alone at times when we call the police. They get no help, because we spooked to do anything. So that's why a lot of this casework can't be done, because we putting people in dangerous situations. It's not coordinating well. We got people sitting right now in front of the post office, been there for ever. So we are trying to get, and we have preached this and preached this and preached this, because it's our wards that take the brunt of it. From the facilities being all over in our wards, from, we just, we know people poor. So we have to get to the point where we are investing our money into something different, where people can get into the- into the gut of this thing, and un-bottle these, the services, or we will forever be trying to give out $2.5 million every year, forever. And it should not be like that. We have to start addressing some of the root causes of some of this stuff. We have to start advocating for this. These are some of the topics that we need to be sending our lobbyists to talk about. Mental health, and I'm sure we are, Mayor, I'm sure you, I- I've definitely been in some conversations with you on that. But we have to keep pressing those. Those things are important. Not the- not the- the good folks that go to Helping Hands and they want the help and stuff, we have some individuals that are not going. They will not go. But then our constituents, like, man, they, you know, they on the sidewalk, they rolling around in front of the- the post office. Those are the situations that we have to put some priority and some details to. We have to fix this- this thing between our police and making sure that they go- go help these callers, or we're gonna have a, you know, you, we had a state worker go, just bought some kids, get killed. We don't want that situation on our hands, but that's what we playing with, because nobody want to be real. Thank you, and that's all I'm gonna say tonight.
Alderwoman Connolly?
Thank you. And I just want to kind of clarify something, because I would agree with you. If we've been giving $2 million a year out to the same two organizations, I would also have some hesitations. Last time we had an allocation this large was to Salvation Army to do the Emergency Overflow Shelter. That was it. And they provided no services there. There was, that was a very bare bones operation. This is, this is monumental, the money that we're getting. This is not the kind of money that these organizations have been working with for years. This is the something different. This, this is what that is. When we're, I mean, these are big federal dollars coming in, and we have not, I just want to clarify, because- I just want to clarify, because we've not been putting two million a year into working with our unhoused residents. That has not been happening. This is a huge step for us. This is a huge step for our community, and it builds housing capacity in a way that we have not been able to do. And I'm, so I just want to clarify that, because I wish we could. I mean, I do. I think we should be putting more money into this issue, but I don't want to leave it out there that we've somehow been doing two million a year. Because I, I mean, to our shame, that is not what we've been doing. This is a huge investment, and I am thrilled to see it, I'm thrilled to see what you will do with this money. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Williams, are you, do you, okay, Alderman Gregory?
Budget manager, can you give me any and every expense that we have spent in the last five years that has anything to do with permanent supportive housing or any of our social service groups? Can you, I don't need it today, but can y'all give me those totals, please? Thank you.
Anything else, Alderman?
No, no, ma'am, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second for the amendment, so you'll be able to vote on your computers. But the vote is for the amendment. For all those in favor of the amendment would vote yes, all those not in favor of the amendment would vote no. Voting is now open, sorry. One left. And the motion fails with six voting no, three voting yes. So now we're back to the regular agenda item 2025-233, and we had a motion and a second for that. Any discussion on the regular agenda item? Alderwoman Purchase?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to still, I'm going to still vote to move this forward, but the whole point was also in supporting what Alderman Gregory and a few of us on this horseshoe had talked about. We still want to see the work being done, and we will still be continuing to watch. And we just don't want you to come in when you ready to try to defend yourself. Let's be a little bit more proactive and come in to also update us with other things that's going on. Because the last time I remember seeing everybody was when you was up here ready to defend each organization on what someone said or what our police department had did wrong and how you guys are doing better. So I want to make sure that I make that very clear on the record, that I hope to see you all continuing to come forward before we get to budget time as well. And we all know when budget time is. So we should see something or see someone coming up to give some type of report and not just a documentary read. Thank you.
Can I ask for a clarification? Do you mind? Okay. I know that Josh Sables from Heartland House has been doing a great job sending reports. So are you saying, in addition to the reports being emailed, you would like someone to come forward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's just transparency, Mayor, because you're doing your part in making sure we get the reports, but the community doesn't hear anything. And then again, and if they do, I might be missing.
He's been doing a great job, so, yep, we'll work together.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Gregory?
Is this now of our home ARP funds, is this it? Do we have any more left? Thank you.
Any other questions, Alderman?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion from the Alders? Be okay to vote? Okay. Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the ordinance will vote yes, all those opposed from the ordinance will vote no. Have to get your machine checked out, huh? And the ordinance passes with seven voting yes, two voting no. The chair, excuse me, will now entertain a motion to place agenda item 2025-233 on final passage. Did we just do that? Sorry, my apologies. I wrote on my paper for the Alderwoman. So that will bring us to unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business to go before the city council from the Navy Alders?
Yes.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, Director Fuchs, how you doing? We have a lot of our businesses who are excited to see all the cones and ropes up. And then we have some businesses saying, when are you going to get this out of the way? So, I said, we have a lot of businesses from downtown excited on the construction that's going on and the ropes and the cones. But then we also have some who saying, hey, when is this going to be done or be completed? I just wanted you to share a little update, because there's a lot of activity going on downtown.
Sure. The overall program that we actually started this Monday is scheduled to run through the very first part of September. And of course, everything that I say on this is contingent on weather. It's really hard to pour cement when it's raining, it's hard to build forms and whatnot. So weather plays a large role in it. Right now, we're working on Monroe Street between Fifth and Ninth Street, and we are scheduled to be on that particular stretch of the street for three weeks. We're also on Seventh Street from Madison to Cook Street, actually to Monroe right now. And that's also scheduled to be there for three weeks if the weather stays with us. And then, of course, we'll move to the other side of the street, and then we're also working on Washington Street. So overall, the overall timeline started on Monday, and we hope to be finished with everything by the first part of September.
Okay, and if Mother Nature does not decide to cooperate us, do you have a contingency plan in place? Because I know we also have Mother Road coming up close to that time too.
We're going to keep working till we get it done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Gregory?
Yes, real quick, real quick. Mayor, I've been getting a lot of calls from parents who put in for the summer youth jobs, the seasonal jobs and things, and they have not gotten any callbacks or notification of anything. I didn't know if we hired for them.
I think they're still hiring some, because I signed some hiring recommendations today, so they're not done yet. Specifically, I know the Oak Ridge Cemetery jobs were some that I signed today. So, but I think they do communicate with them once they're filled, so.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate it.
I'll check with Director Thompson as well.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Ms. Amy, I know there was a meeting today, and I just want to get a brief update, if you could. On the, I know you had a brief meeting today with Ryan McCready on some things with the East Side.
Yes, sir.
I would take an update if you had it.
I think what we talked about was ways that we could make it more open and welcoming to people from looking at sidewalks, walkability, which adds to safety, which can also, you know, many of us, we walk down a sidewalk, you're not as likely to maybe drop a cup or it's from trash to the side as you are if you're walking through tall grass or unfinished business areas. We talked about what kinds of businesses could attract. And one of the things that you need to talk about too is, how are those businesses attracted? Is it ready for them to open their doors? Is it, what needs to happen, and how can we market it? And more than anything else, kind of like, well, very much like what we've been doing or working toward in OPEC and throughout the city agencies, is getting community input. Getting community input. If you were to open a restaurant here, if you were to open this business here, what would you like to see? What would be good in your community? So that's some of the things we talked about.
All right, I look forward to working with, hopefully we can, Mayor, do you know where the Growth Alliance is on the subcommittee? Are they?
That's what we were working on today, part of that's what we were working on today. And we'll just continue to invite you to the meetings, and if you can make them great.
No, I thought it was best for me to send today's out. So I just want to carry on so we can get out early.
Yeah, we're continuing on, and we'll be sure to make sure you're involved.
All right, thank you. So there was a, well, let me go to updates on the cannabis grants. So we're getting more and more increasing calls where we're.
Yeah, we've been making some recommendations, and we're reviewing one more final time to look at, making sure we're checking on all the applications, make fair and equitable. We actually used a score sheet for all of those. And we've been working with Corporation Council, with the mayor, and with our team, again, looking at making those awards.
Do we have a timetable or when that will happen?
We'll be moving forward. I'm not going to say that. Do we have a timetable on exactly?
I'm ready to announce them. I just, we had until June, so I've been working with the businesses. So as long as they submitted in time, I worked with them back and forth if they needed bids, if they're missing something to make sure that their application was ready. But yeah, I think, I mean, I think I'm ready to announce them whenever I talk with Amy.
As we move forward and finish our review.
Whenever she authorizes, I get it. So I will tell you.
I haven't seen the list, so I've been authorized.
I get it, trust me. But I will say, Julia, Ms. Griffin, you have been complimented time and time again from people in our community. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to get out with you as we had planned, but I think that was good for you to go out and do those things. I definitely, definitely had some good laughs. People were surprised that you even came in some of those spots. So, so thank you.
She showed me the list of where she was going, and she went out there.
No, thank you. That's what you have to do, go out and build your own rapport, and you have done that. So I just want to let you know that your work or anything I say up here is not towards your work, because you do work hard, and I have gotten a call and compliments on you and your receptiveness and things of that nature. So I just want to let you know that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We've also learned some things, Alder, all of you as well. We know that when we've been out in the community and we've explained things, which has led to more and more applications or led to more and more questions, we also have learned some, more and more about the barriers. So some of the things about what paperwork is required, what that paperwork looks like. Julia did a slide in one of the community presentations and actually showed him, if you don't have this, we need this to prove that you have a business. So we're still getting applications, and that's sometimes part of our process. We're still getting applications that are incomplete because it is an understanding of what you really need and what documentation you need. And so we know that we can do more and more of that. Maybe it's as putting together a sample application, where you've got, you know, this is an example of what this form would look like. This is what you need to get, this is what we need to see. And so we're just, all we can do is improve.
I think all of these things will mesh well with our subcommittee and really, really, really having some extra arms and things to help. So I will say that, you know, I appreciate all our work, but I must press upon you that we really, really have to, in next year's round, if we could try to get it out as quick. And the reason why I say this, right, is because most people now got jobs, even when we, if they need some work now, it's going to be hard for them to find some work. Some of them may have had some deals on some buildings and they lose them, you know, after being so long. You know, and I get it, 30 days, we did the application period, a good 30 days is needed to rustle everything down and another time period. But I think it's very, very important, because, you know, most of these, we still got from the last round. People who.
Still playing catch up, as soon as we can get forward.
I know, I know. We got some from the last round that we still got to work out and things. And I think, you know, on that subject, two of them are food trucks. So I want to venture, one of the ideas that I have is, you know, we own some lots on South Grand. We can maybe do a food truck court since we approved that, and we don't want them to lose that. And it could be similar to what we see on Sixth Street. It would be very, very cool. It's spaced out, it's definitely not another business in 250 feet restaurant wise. We've looked into it earlier on a single note, but since we keep approving that without, you know, and not this particular group. But it's caused some angst, you know, and we need to figure that out and have a location for them to do some of those things. So I just want to press on that, that's very, very important. We want them to get it and not lose what they've set up to even qualify for the applications. So finally, thank you, Ms. Julia. I don't have any more questions for that. Ms. Amy, I did ask some questions, you did send it out not only to me and to the council. And I just hope that for future communication, you can always send out what I ask. I'm not ever hiding anything that I'm asking from the mayor, from any of our council members, from corporate council, anybody. I ask openly and willingly, and anybody can know what I'm asking for, because I'm asking for a reason. So I just hope that that process can continue, that's fine. Any communication you get from any of the others, you send it that way through Tim Griffin as well. I just ask for that fairness. So there's a situation with these UCP buildings over here. There was a core grant used, I got a call from the state representative office about what we did with that funding.
And I'm sorry, I haven't addressed that yet. I have been in communication, both Corporation and Council, I need to get back to you on that. That was something that was prior to my time, even prior to my time managing grants here at the city. But I was able to pull some files, and we've communicated on that. I just don't have an answer yet.
So my question is, is that funding still in our coffers? Or did we send it back to the state? And how do we pay for the buildings?
Okay.
That information should definitely be readily. Corporation Council.
I haven't had a chance to meet with her since this came up on Friday, so I can't answer that for you.
All right, thank you.
Your question is flagged in my email, and I'm sorry that we haven't gotten back to you yet.
Okay, all right. That information is very, very, very important of where that funding is and what we have done with it. And lastly, so I want to say to Ms.
Alderman, sorry, I'm not trying to interrupt you. But that question, I'll have the budget director actually follow up with you on that, because I think she would have that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Metzger. Thank you, thank you, I appreciate you. And lastly, I just want to, you know, we have a lot of employees in the city, and all of us know some of them, right? And none of them can be afraid to talk to us, whether there's something wrong or whether it's good. They can't be afraid to talk to us. And if they're being told not to talk to us, that is wrong. I'm just going to say that to you. If they're being told that, if any associates of ours are being told that because of their relationships with us. That's why a lot of times we try to keep people out of it, because we don't want them having retaliation against them.
Of course.
I will let you know, Julia's husband is the one that called me, not Julia. And now he is worried, you know, I can tell you, he is worried about his wife and her job and retaliation against her. So I will, I will just, I will just say that I hope that's not occurring in any manner. She is a fabulous worker, she's come up here, and she's explained to us things that we didn't even agree with, but yet still, we respect her highly and anyone else in here. We're going to agree to disagree on things, and that's okay. But nobody should feel threatened for their jobs. You know, nobody should be scared to talk to us, that work for us, or tell us what's going on if they feel like something is going on that they don't like. And I just want to just let people know that, because we will stand with them. Any regard, whatever action that they take with the city, we will stand with them. So thank you, I just want, I had to let that out and say that publicly because, you know, too many times, you know, once you hear something that's a rumor, but if you keep hearing that from employees at this city, that they're afraid to talk to us, we can't have that. So, thank you.
Alderman, we always have the inspector general, the people can anonymously put in a complaint as well.
Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, no, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works Director, please, sir. You know, we was talking timelines on Adloff, you know, since 2019 before. And then we got some passed a good four or five months ago. What's the timeline on Adloff?
It's scheduled to begin, the work begin this season. And they are finishing up the, they've done the survey work. As you know, it's wet drainage is a big issue. So they've finalized all that. I couldn't tell you the day they're supposed to start, but it is scheduled for this season.
Still this summer?
Yes.
As well as Adams and Wheeler, from Adams to Wheeler.
Yes. That's scheduled for the summer as well.
Summer as well, okay. And then grass, I talked last week about grass along Cook Street, and it's Tuesday again, and it's the same situation. So do we have a shortage of cutters?
No, sir. We have spoken to the contractors and told them that they are responsible to mow the area between the curb and the sidewalk, the right of way. And if they've been negligent, that they've been counseled on it, and they will cut that from here on out.
Okay, because so that there's no confusing, I'm talking about driving down the street and just between the curb and the sidewalk, you'll see it nice and mowed, and then all of a sudden, you'll see one that's just real high.
Yes, sir.
Then you go again, and real high. So I don't know if you're signing those contractors out to those specific little spots?
Those would go with the lot that is adjacent to it, that would be on the other side of the sidewalk. And if they have missed it, they've been counseled and.
Okay, so you think that might be the case, most of it is a miss? I appreciate your answer, thank you.
Anything else, Alderman?
Yeah, I'm finished, thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Thank you. Director Fuchs, I'm glad that you cleared that up, because, Sean, what's the street my grandma stay on? Reynolds. So I take her for a walk every morning when I go over there. And we were joking because the grass is like up to my shoulder, and she's just a little bit taller than me. But I think it's one of our lots. So I was asking Alderman Gregory and Alderman Williams from talking to you, because that's over in his ward too, but my grandma stays there. How does it work with the contractors? Are we behind?
They're supposed to, and if they have missed it, we've advised them that they are responsible for mowing that. Do you have the 100 block on Reynolds?
Sean, help me out. It's like two blocks from 11th Street, as soon as you turn on Reynolds.
About 13.
To the east?
About 1300 to the northeast. Yep.
And then Director Fooks, say for instance, like you have, did your due diligence with talking to them? Do you give them a certain timeframe they have to get it cut and they have to report back to you? Or like what is-
From the, from the time that they, they received the packet, we asked them to have cut it within 48 hours.
Well, yeah, you did a good job because KFC was like that and it was cut the next morning. So just asking if they don't follow through, do they have any, you know, do we have anything in place or do we go to the next person in line?
If, if there's a problem, that's exactly what we do. We go to the next, the next contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Alderwoman?
No, thank you.
Okay. So that is unfinished business. Is there any new business to bring before the city council? Alderman Williams? Nope, he's gone. Just forgot to do his button. Any new business? Seeing none, we will then move on to citizens' advance requests to address the council. First person signed up to speak is Cameron Hudgens.
Hello.
Hi.
Uh, hello. My name's Cameron Hudgens. Go ahead and start speaking.
Yes, sir.
Um, my name's Cameron Hudgens and I am a member of the Environmental Club at Lincoln Land Community College. And I am also a worker now. I gained employment there in the biology department as a lab biology assistant. And I'm a native resident of Springfield, Illinois. And my request is to figure out some information about cleaning up garbage in some areas in the city that, I mean, I exercise a lot and I've noticed some areas in the city that need cleaned up that are kind of like hard to get to. Mainly on the Wabash Bike Trail behind the old car wash back there, an Indigo Restaurant. There's a lot back there. A lot of garbage, probably at least a thousand shopping bags unless somebody picked it up. But I don't want to pick up any trash. And I mean, I, I want to pick up the trash and stuff, but I don't want to get there and get in trouble for it. So I was just wondering what I would do. And another area is right there by one of my bus stops next to the new Sierra Sports Store. It's in those gated areas where the water is. And the, the trash bags will get in there somehow and trapped inside the gates. And I can't hop the fence without permission and pick up the garbage. And I think somebody might have actually already cleaned that area up, but I don't know about the old car wash. But that's, that's all I have. That's my request.
Thank you.
Sir, where did you say the car wash was?
It's, it's over by Indigo.
By Maribas and Indigo.
I'll get it to the budget, or I'm sorry, the Public Works Director.
Can I respond on that?
Uh, Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thanks for-
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Williams signed up first. Alderman Williams, do you-
I always forget to-
Okay, nevermind. Alderman Hanauer.
I appreciate you bringing that up. The, we have had contact, usually a couple times a year, we have to contact the owners of the strip mall that, where Sierra and those are.
Yeah.
Uh, right there at the corner. A lot of times their weeds get high and then, and you're right, the shopping bags and everything. There's a lot of trash that accumulates. The, in the bike trail behind Indigo and that area, that, that car wash, we've had a lot of problems with that car wash with, with homeless breaking in and staying there. We've, they've been cited numerous times. We probably need to get with, I think the, the bike trail is, is part of the-
It's the, it's the park district.
It's a park district, so we-
I routinely call them. They're supposed to take a truck if I can, Mayor. They're supposed to take a truck through that whole Wabash Trail once a month.
But tha- thank you. Thank you for bringing that. We, yeah.
No problem.
I get, I get calls about that regularly. So thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next person signed up to speak is Roy Walton. Mr. Walton?
Good evening, everyone. Hello, everyone. My name is Roy Walton and I would like to bring awareness to a few things like harm reduction. From my understanding, harm reduction is any act that reduces harm. And I feel this should be practiced on all levels. According to documents, issues I previously, previously addressed were capable of being dealt with within these meetings. According to certain documents, first of all, police professionalism and ethics involve upholding a high standard of conduct, including moral values, professional standards, and adherence to ethical codes. This includes treating all individuals with courtesy, consideration, and dignity without bias or discrimination. Police ethics also encompass maintaining public trust and ensuring accountability. As an officer, I will never employ unnecessary force. I will respect the privacy of people and communities that I serve, and I will fully obey the laws that I am sworn to enforce. I will live by example, remembering that my character and conduct, on duty and off, directly influence the legitimacy of policing profession. According to the ACLU, being stopped by police is a stressful experience that can go bad quickly. Here we describe what the law requires and also offer strategies for handling these policies encounters. We want to be clear, the burden of de-escalation does not fall on the private citizens. It falls on the police officers. However, you cannot assume officers will behave in a way that protects your safety or that they will respect your rights even after you assert them. You may be able to reduce the risk yourself by staying calm and not exhibiting hostility towards the officers. The truth is that there are situations where people have done everything they could to put an officer at ease, yet still ended up injured or killed. According to this document, the Springfield City Council has the primary, primary authority for governing the Springfield Police Department. While the chief of police currently was Ken Scarlett, heads the department's day-to-day operations, the city council sets overall policy and has the power to appoint or remove the chief according to the city's code of ordinance. With that being said, I addressed some issues. So once again, I ask, what's the proper procedure for filing a complaint against leadership entities? Who is responsible for enforcing this accountability? How do you file a Freedom of Information for disciplinary reports on officers? What's the punishment process? Is it on a progressive punishment level? Is this information public record or can it be made public record for the community to assist with the harm reduction process? According to the documents earlier, I am talking to the people with this authority. I asked before and I ask again for somebody to reach out to me. My information are in, is in your databases about these issues and answers to my question. The last time I was sent to the PCR seat, but he can't help me until this process is concluded. So once again, I would like from somebody at some time to reach out to me about these issues. The last time, Mayor, you asked me, was I done instead of trying to assist me with this issue? But if actions need to be taken, like addressing the community for voting purposes, to remove those who are incapable of handing in the power that they were given by the community, then so be it. But I'm tired of being given the runaround. Somebody please address me and thank you for listening.
Sir, if you would see Director Posey in the back, he can tell you how you can get the answers to your questions, okay? He's just turned around and he'll wave at you if you- Okay. Director Posey can help you with those answers, sir. Alderwoman Purchase, did you want to speak?
Nope, that was what I was about to ask you.
Okay. Yep. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for listening.
Next person signed up to speak is Tiara Standage.
Hello, I'm Tiara Standage, the executive director of Intricate Minds. At Intricate Minds, we believe that every person deserves to feel safe, respected, and valued regardless of what they're going through. That's why we offer not only services with no barriers, but also wraparound support and harm reduction with heart. Healing does not start in a waiting room. It starts with human connection. It starts with meeting basic needs, food, hygiene, and healthcare without judgment or delay. At Intricate Minds, we show up for people exactly as they are. Whether someone is housed or unhoused, using substances or in recovery, young or aging, they are worthy of care right now. So far in 2025, we have provided 440 free haircuts, giving people more than a fresh look, but also dignity, confidence, and the ability to walk into an interview, a courtroom, or even just out into the street with their head held high. 880 sack lunches because no one can survive on an empty stomach and access to consistent nourishment is a human right. 1,100 warm meals, served with compassion and creating space for comfort, safety, and community. These may seem like small acts to some, but they open big doors. When people are ready, we are ready at Intricate Minds with life-saving tools. We provide clean needles, which reduces the spread of HIV and hepatitis C. Fentanyl testing strips, empowering people to make safer choices, sometimes a life or death choice, in an unpredictable drug market. Both nasal and intramuscular Narcan to reverse opioid overdoses in real time because being alive is the first step to any type of change. Wound care kits, helping people treat minor injuries before they come major problems or unnecessary hospital visits. Hygiene kits, restoring self-worth and protecting against infection. Condoms, lube, Plan B, and pregnancy tests because reproductive justice means access without shame. Free HIV testing offered confidentially as part of our commitment to total wellness. We don't wait for people to be clean to offer help, nor do we imply that they are dirty for needing or asking for help. Because help without judgment is what works. People who participate in harm reduction programs are five times more likely to enter treatment than those who don't. Why? Because harm reduction builds trust, it removes stigma, it puts people first, and keeps them alive long enough to consider recovery and gives them the hope to believe that it's possible and will work. This is what wraparound care really looks like. This is harm reduction in action. This is Intricate Minds and we're just getting started. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Somebody also left their phone up here.
Aaron Cahill?
Mayor Alders, resident of Springfield. I stand before you today, a man trying to figure out what happened to loving thy neighbor. Department of Homeland Security released a statement the other day listing 500 sanctuary cities, counties, and states. Of the cities listed in Illinois, Chicago was one of them listed. But guess who isn't? Yep, capital city. Capital city of Illinois is not on that list. You know why? Because we haven't denounced the federal government's reign of terror on the immigrant population. They've stopped going to standing appointments with the immigration courts out of fear they'll get scooped up in a raid. Immigration Customs Enforcement is literally waiting outside of courtrooms for these folks to come out of the courtroom so they can grab them, shove them in a van, and deport them. The federal, the federal government has been pulling people's constitutional rights to air grievance to the government without fear of deportation. We, as a city, should make this, should make this commitment to our immigration, immigrant population and help protect them. Our community needs leadership that will speak out and speak up. If you would just denounce the terror the federal government is putting people through, that would tell the immigrant community that you care and you want them here. It's a simple thing. I want them here and I'm sure others do too. We had two of our residents kidnapped and not a word from our city's leadership about it. I came before y'all not too long ago, bringing this to your attention, and I feel as though our pleas have fallen on deaf ears. But what should I expect since it took so long to take down massage parlors that were allegedly trafficking young women of Asian descent? I know some of you in this horseshoe have denounced this chaos, but others not so much. I thought that something this serious could reach across party lines and you could all work together, but alas, I feel I may have put, been wrong about that. I hope those of you who wouldn't care, couldn't care less about our immigrant community can find a way to the light and perhaps be pro-human for a change. But don't worry, until that time comes, we, the people, will toe the line and defend our neighbors. We'll be there to run ice off if they try to fool with our neighbors. And don't forget, there's a protest on June 6th at the Capitol and the 14th and 15th of June, we have the Juneteenth celebration. Hope to see some of y'all there.
Thank you. Tara Hodge? Is there a Tara Hodge here tonight?
Right here.
Okay, sorry. Sorry, ma'am. Can you have somebody go help her with the stand, please? They're gonna lower that for you, ma'am, so you can get to it, okay?
Are you able to come on here? I can lower it now. Okay. Maybe. It's not plugged in.
Plugged in?
It's not plugged in.
Where's it gonna be plugged in at? Mayor, Mayor, can we use that mic?
They're gonna plug it in and lower it.
Sorry. It's still not going.
Still ain't working.
Clerk, we have the, we have the portable microphone. Well, we have Jeff Ajesi's microphone. Do you want that? Thank you, Jeff.
Test.
There we go.
There you go.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Tara Hodge. I am 52 years old. I live at the Hildebrand through housing, Springfield Housing Authority. And I just wanted to address something to y'all today. I was in court today and I had so many things going on at that apartment building since I've lived there with the elevators breaking down, me being put on the sixth floor when they knew I had underlying conditions. And they ignored all that and they got people on the 10th floor that's bed bound, that's, you know, too high up when fires occur, they can't get down. I was one of the people that was left in the building when the fire caught, the building caught on fire because somebody was drunk or on drugs and left the food cooking and laid down and went to sleep or left the building. And that's how the fires was occurring. Okay, on my behalf, I'm here speaking not just for myself. I'm speaking for other people that's going through the same thing, that's afraid to speak and talk about what's really going on. They, I was in court this morning and they got me up for eviction for Friday. So my question to you all is, what can I do? I'm disabled. When I moved there, I didn't have bed bugs or no kind of bugs, but since I've been there, I had to call an ambulance to come get me because I was getting ate up by bed bugs living there. Also, the mold in the building. I had mold in my ceiling. They came out and seen it, didn't do nothing about it. I'm still living there. I do have 19 underlying conditions, heart issues, lung conditions. I, I, I have to depend on a, a heart monitor to sleep at night when I'm sleeping to survive. I also have to take oxygen, which I'm not gonna be able to use it if I'm put out and I don't have nowhere to go. I have to be put out by Friday. So where I'm gonna plug my machines up to use them to sleep? my machines up to use them to sleep? I also want to address that I have two people that's, you know, supported me. When I lived there, I had help with laundry through Mr. Frazier, and his organization has helped me do my laundry due to me not keeping workers because of the situation going on in the building with the bedbugs, I couldn't keep a worker, so he washed my clothes for me, you know, at his place without charge, and I feel that it should be funding to him also, because he helps the community, and he don't have money to pay people to help people like me, when I can't be on it. I also want to state that Tiara Standage, she does a whole lot for the community, she does free sack lunches, she does a free meal on Wednesday, a hot meal, and, you know, if homeless people go there, I go there, because sometimes, you know, I don't, you know, feel like cooking because of my condition, I have a torn rotary cuff. So my thing is to you guys is, you know, I just, I need help. I don't know where I'm going or what I'm gonna do, you know, with my situation being disabled, and I paid my rent, and I've been there three years, and I just felt like I've been wrongly done because of my disability, and I feel that they retaliated against me because all the things that I've said about the building being unfit for anybody to live. So I'm just trying to address to you all, I'm speaking for myself and for other people. I don't want to see nobody else, my worst enemies, I wouldn't dare want to see them go through what I'm going through, because it's not right, you know, and they move people in the building, and they have company coming in and out, they have drug activity, prostitution, whatever you name is going on in that building, I'm not used to that, you know. I come from a good home, I'm not from Springfield, but I was raised here. My mother moved back here in 1978, I went to kindergarten all the way to the 12th grade and to Robert Morris College. I have a medical degree. My health enabled me for continuing, trying to do what I always had on my heart to do is to help people. I've always liked to help people, and I'm still helping people, even though I have a situation of my own, I still try to help, I give back. Thank you, guys.
Ms. Hodge, Director Posey will get your information, and he can help, that's, so our community relations office is the office that will intervene in housing situations like that, okay? So Ethan can work with you.
All right, thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Pasha, actually says Kenneth Pasha.
Jesus, dude. I about lost it back there, I don't know if anybody saw that, I'm not ashamed to cry in front of anybody, but if you're stoic after that, check your pulse. I think it's disgusting in this city that we don't notice the kind of people that fall through the cracks until it's that dangerous. I mean, this is insane. One of the most dangerous sayings on earth is, "This is the way we've always done it, so let's keep doing it." That amendment had a purpose. There are programs that are different from what we're just doing, because people are still falling through the cracks. People are still not getting the help they deserve, and that's not an attack on Fifth Street Renaissance or Helping Hands, they didn't need 20 people to show up here, that was ridiculous, because not one of them had a word to say. That's completely ridiculous. How do you justify a woman having to call an alderman to get her power turned back on because her landlord doesn't have the heart to do it? That's disgusting that our city doesn't have a landlord registry that we should have fought four years ago to keep the kind of slum lords, like, does anyone remember John Vaughn? I mean, come on now, people have been exploiting the poor, the underdeveloped, the marginalized in this town for decades, and it's been going on for far too long, and what I just watched with us, what was it, six to three?
Two.
Sorry, no, Triana wasn't here, I counted the wrong one, but it's just insane to me that this is continual. Like, somebody mentioned the guys downtown by the post office, bro, before Moxo burned down, you'd get harassed over there, and guess who's not coming back downtown? Because they got better business out west, now why is that? You think any unhoused people stay out there for long? You think cops don't pick them up real quick when they show up at the mall causing problems? I guess it's just frustrating to me that the line of demarcation that I consistently talk about is visually available, and I think the thing that a lot of you need to consider is that many of you do come from privileged backgrounds, and some of you may argue that in terms of the privilege you enjoy, and you know who I'm including and who I'm not, and you know where you grew up, and what you had, and what other people had, and the opportunities that were afforded to you that other people have never even gotten to touch, or even sniff, or even watch, except from afar, jealousy in their hearts, because God forbid they ever didn't struggle that hard. Do you think any of you guys are gonna end up like her in the end? I don't think you do, I think you know better. I think the money you've acquired, the resources you have, and the connections you've created in your lives will prevent that from happening, and that's not an attack on you, good for you, but the recognition of the difference of people like that that continue to fall through the cracks, whether they have to come up here in a wheelchair and do it and beg after mold and bedbugs, have you ever been bitten by a bedbug in your life? You know what that's like to live in that kind of squalor? If you do, it's awful, it's horrible, it's horrific, it makes you think things about yourself and what you deserve and what you're worth. I've been unhoused in my life. It's, 20 years ago, the amount of resources that were available would have broken your heart, to hear the stories that were available from the women that got raped near the shelters, or that couldn't even get in because of the men that would harass them that were employed by some of them. I mean, it's just insane that yet again, here we are, listening to somebody beg for help, and yet we have organizations that can't even meet the needs of our constituents being handed millions of dollars. It's just insane. How do we continue to justify that sort of loss, where people are not getting the help that they need? And it's just infuriating that I have to, that, I've had conversations with people on this council and elsewhere about the issues in this city, and a lot of times, what I continually hear is that there seems to be this sort of like resistance to change, and a resistance to recognizing that the methods that have been being used are not working. Just more housing is not a solution, it just isn't. That's not the only solution. Once you get someone a house, what happens then? I mean, I think it's just wild that we're like, letting this sit to the point that this woman had to come basically break down in front of you guys, and that's not your fault, but it is when you consider that those kind of complaints shouldn't have to get that far, that that woman shouldn't have to be covered in bedbugs and have to have a charity wash her laundry for her, because the facilities she's in are so decrepit, so damaged, so irreparable, even after inspection, and even after numerous endless complaints, it still sits like that. I just, I am privileged to be as old as I am, we've talked about the age disparities on my side of town, and I know I'm gonna go over my time, but I'm still gonna talk for 10 more seconds, because I really need to say this, I need you to really think about the idea that the reason those lives are so short, because of conditions like that, because of lack of resources, a lack of access, a lack of recognition for what's happening to people out here in your city every single day.
Thank you, Mr. Pasha. Maribel Cruz Heine. Maribel Cruz Heine. Douglas Holt.
Douglas Holt.
Douglas Holt. Your mic not on yet. Oh, hang on one second. Can we redo his time, the microphone didn't turn back on? I'm sorry. Give us one second, if you would, please. Okay, it looks like it's on now, thank you.
All right, thanks. I'm here to discuss records and reports, and primarily what I'm getting is records and reports of communication between myself and the city, and that the part of what it is that I'm referring to is that...
Move it closer to your mouth, maybe.
My, 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 right here. Okay, let me, let me pull it up.
Yeah, pull it up, there you go.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Holt.
Now, wait a minute, I'm gonna hold on to this, just in case we slide. But anyway, I'm here to discuss records and reports, primarily records and reports that I receive in communication from the city of Springfield. And part of the problem that I'm having with is that the records that I'm receiving are either incomplete and inaccurate, or in some cases, outright false. I've got a number of claims in, at least three claims in with the city of Springfield, from knee injury at the library, from being falsely accused by your security guards at the library, to someone damaging our fence when they ran into a light pole in a backyard, and just cars slid over to our fence and hit our fence for damages. I received one letter that I don't even know what it's in reference to, it just said that we were denied the claim, and in doing so, I don't know which one to put this with as force of claim, because they didn't specify what it is they were talking about. And not only that, in the letter, also, they're accusing me of blaming the city for this, I believe, because if this is in reference to the one from the car accident having to do with the fence, and if that's the case, then what I requested was, because on the police report, it's incomplete, it didn't have the insurance on there for me to file my claim against a private citizen for the damages that they did to our fence. I mean, I can go on, there's several other cases I have that I've been working with regards to claims that I've been trying to put in, which, because inaccurate information coming back from the city, is stopping me from moving forward with what it is that rightfully, which rightfully belongs to me. I mean, we're talking from civil rights and human rights to now property damage, and it's been consistently that way every time I try to communicate with the city regards to police reports, and mostly police reports. One outright got denied, but there's, nobody's mentioned about what kind of record it is or where it's coming from, it's just, did not say they're not giving me one. With, I mean, with that in mind, that's pretty much what I'm here for. I'm here to make sure that I get the accurate information from the city, which hasn't been put on the reports and the letters that I've received, so that I can move forward with the claims that I have, not necessarily against the city, but also against private citizens, but are being blocked because that information is not accurate. For example, in another case, we're talking about anonymous callers, and that in being a report to the city against me, because I didn't cut my grass from my neighbors or people in the community wanting me to cut the grass. But somehow, we have anonymous callers that are coming through, but these same anonymous callers don't see this three feet of grass in the yard next door to me. These same anonymous callers don't see the house across the street that's been peeling paint for over 15 years. So what I'm getting at with anonymous callers is that these people are ganging up on us to try to force us to do things the way they want it done, when they want it done, while they're ignoring their friends, relatives, and everybody else that's around us that got more violations than we do. I'm just here, you know, just to, I get right or wrong, I'm trying to, I don't want to be the one that they're concerned to be that we're blaming, playing the blame game on us for everything that's going on, when they're not even doing what they're supposed to be doing, but yet they're ganging up on us and coming up with all these stories about, through anonymous callers. I mean, from those who along, that's more than enough to what I'm referring to, of course, inaccurate or incomplete, complete records. For the other cases I have, I can deal with that later on, because I'm running out of time, I don't have the time to go through everything. But the biggest thing is, as I mentioned to you, counsel, last week, about the letter regarding, I believe has to do with the fence case, where it doesn't clearly say, and it doesn't have the insurance, and what I was asking was to piggyback on when you get paid to let us get paid for the damages, our...
Mr. Holt, I think you're aware of who the chief of staff is, if you'll see him in the back, if he'll meet you over to the side, he can take notes of your cases that you want him to follow up on, okay? Thank you, sir. Brianna Eilers.
Before I begin, I have a lot to say today. I just want to say that I am so glad that John Vaughn was mentioned, because I was 16 living in those apartments, and I paid my rent by dressing up like a bunny. With that said, here I am, standing before you, the co-chair of the Land of Lincoln DSA, also letting that out there, be so that way people can join if they would like to.
And we don't allow electioneering in here, so please don't do that.
Well, it's not a party, it's, so, okay. Public health emergency, we are in the middle of a public health emergency, whether Springfield wants to admit it or not, between the bedbugs and the mites, we are in the middle of a public health emergency. The reason why I say this, the bubonic plague, way back when, also known as the Black Death, it was spread by fleas. This gave us the nursery rhyme of "Ring Around the Rosie," because people smelled so bad from the bacterial infections that they put flowers in their pockets in order to combat the smell. So, over-the-counter flea treatments do not treat mites. So there are people in Springfield who are poor, they are not able to go to vets, and I don't know if you know this, but the United States has the massive, a massive amount of domesticated pets, we are the leading in the entire world. So with that said, flea treatments, we're treating our pets, our pets are getting overran by mites, that's not even touching on the bedbugs. Mites cause scabies, scabies cause open areas in the skin that allow for bacteria to enter, that's how the bubonic plague came about. If the mites themselves are not transmitting diseases, they are creating ample opportunity for diseases to infiltrate bodies. This goes the same with bedbugs. Doctors in Springfield are not treating this. There are humans walking around with scabies, and they are not being treated. So this is my letting everybody know in Springfield that acetic acid, lots of laundry, or lots of lotion, and cleaning your linen every day, if your doctor will give you a prescription, you need permethrin. Permethrin can also be treated with your lawn, and you can go and you can get that in any retail store, in the event you're not able to afford a vet. We need to be washing our hair and our body with acetic acid. If you are trying to help poor humans who are going through this public health emergency, please do donate acetic acid shampoos, conditioners, and lotions to anybody who is giving out hygiene kits. I would like to point out that this is yet another example of a poor tax on poor humans and their time. Poor humans have to spend hours upon hours and days upon days in order to accomplish a goal that wealthier humans can achieve by going to a doctor or a vet. Humans with money can pay for prescription-strength treatment and get on top of the problem quickly, meanwhile, poor humans have to tackle the problem holistically, which, it costs time, and it costs money, meanwhile, disease infiltrates. To be clear, something as small as washing clothes is considered harm reduction. So I ask, please support Intricate Minds, support All-in-One Laundry, support the nonprofit Clean Slate Advocates, support our public health, we need to be on our public health board. What is up with that? We have the biggest, the biggest population in Sangamon County, why do we, why are we not on the public health board? Makes absolutely no sense. Stop giving our stuff to Sangamon County, they don't do anything with it. Okay, I want to also touch, while I'm up here and I've got some time, the Sangamon County Growth Alliance, they just had a meeting with the Massey Commission, they did not mention race at all, at all. They mentioned it on one slide, and that one slide was saying that the race that was mentioned, it was so that way they could get grants. So are black people only good for grants? Curious to know. With that being said, he also stated that average wages in Springfield have increased 20% since the pandemic. I want to stress that legally, we had to up the minimum wage, legally. He also included CEO pay within that. Take out the CEO pay and account for the legality, I guarantee you, we are not making any more money, and this is ridiculous, and we need help. There is, the fact that a disabled woman came up here, I bet you anything that that disabled button that you push in order to get the door open... The fact that a disabled woman came up here, I bet you anything that that disabled button that you push in order to get the door open, I bet you it didn't work.
Amy McEwen.
Hello. Thank you for having this opportunity to let me speak today. I'm, live in Ward Seven, so Carlson, you're my older person. I want to start off with some city business and then go a little bit broader than that. I want to start with just thanking the older folks who were at the BLM car procession on Saturday. Notariano and Purchase and Gregory, it was, I think this was a really important year for that, given what has happened in our county. I think it was a really important year when you look at the federal level, that Black Lives Matter Plaza was ripped up in Washington DC because of pressure from the federal branch. So anyway, thank you first to the older folks who showed up for that. I really, my concerns today, I want to express my concerns for our democracy and particularly against our current president in terms of overreaching, in terms of executive overreach and not, well, basically the risks of falling into a dictatorship under this current presidency. So I'm sure you know from civics class, right, that we have three branches of government, right? We have the executive branch, we have the judiciary, right? And we have, of course, the Congress. Now, we have lots and lots of evidence at this point of overreach by the executive branch, right? We, the establishment of this department of government efficiency, can't do that. He can't appoint a department like that on his own. That should be done through Congress so that the lead of that department should be approved through Congress. We can go on. We can think about the lives lost because of the canceling of USAID. Of course, I'm a scientist, so canceling of the grants, again, that's not within the executive power. Those, that funding had already been approved through Congress, right? So all of that money was supposed to go, you know, it went through the same process that we go through here. People negotiate, how does the money go, whatever. There's a lot, you know, Congress did all that and assigned these grants out to NSF, NIH, all of these places. And now we have executive overreach. We have ignoring of the judiciary, right? So ignoring judicial orders like the case of Kilmar Abrego Garcia, right? So the, the judges have ordered the federal government to return him. He is in El Salvador in jail because of an administrative error? Like, how terrifying is that? Can you imagine? So anyway, this is where he is. So you're like, okay, why am I here talking about, to the city about this? What are we going to do? We're just a small city. Well, it turns out that each of us has a role to play in protecting our democracy. And so as a professor, I gave you a handout. I always have a handout and I'm also assigning a reading. This is the reading I'm assigning, which is On Tyranny by Timothy Snyder. And it talks about historically, when you have autocracies, when you have that kind of authoritarian overreach happen. He's a European historian, Yale historian, what people have done. So what people have done to protect democracy. So again, this is a really important book. I would recommend that, that you read. One other thing that you'll see, the, so the first part of the handout is the twenty recommendations of things that you can do. Number eight, stand out. So that's part of why I'm here today, trying to stand out. The second page of the handout is something that elected officials can do. So that's an example letter. Now, there's 200 elected officials across the US who have signed that letter. People like yourselves, people who are like city council members, et cetera. Because of course of the arrests of things like the mayor of Newark, right? So she was released, but she was arrested. And so, you know, calling that out, I think, is really important. The more kind of elected officials we can have sign those types of letters and just say this is outrageous. I have thirty seconds to cover my major point. Being a professor is kind of a job hazard. Okay. So my major point is that the authoritarian playbook is the same regardless of whether it's fascism, Nazism or communism. The nature of the propaganda differs, but the strategies are the same. They do fire hose approach to overwhelm, they challenge truth, they challenge the judiciary, they, they ignore the rule of law, they use emergency language, they challenge academia. We see that with Harvard. We have authoritarian takeovers. People like to use the Germany as an example. But quite frankly, the playbook is the same if you look at Stalin, if you look at Czechoslovakia.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any of these folks at this point, this is civil disobedience.
The next person signed up to speak is Kayla McGuire. Your time is up, ma'am. It's time for Kayla McGuire.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. And so if you want to read something about communism as opposed to...
Is Kayla McGuire here?
As opposed to fascism?
Nope, that's not how it works.
Then you can read Power to the Powerless by Bobbitt Powell.
Ma'am, your time is up. Kayla McGuire, it's your turn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bush. And I would particularly, if you're a registered Republican, come on, this is democracy.
Ms. McGuire?
Good evening. Since the first time I came up here about eight weeks ago, I have been advocating for the deaf community as best as I can. I have made two verbal requests for an American Sign Language interpreter to be present at these meetings, for the transcripts of these meetings to be available to the public and for front-facing cameras. Thank you for the cameras. They are greatly appreciated. I attempted to find transcripts for each meeting and the best I could find was the automated transcripts from YouTube. While this is helpful, there's no way for us to know if these have been thoroughly checked by anyone. So, and I get that using AI to get the words on paper is great, but to, for us to have some kind of confirmation that they were proofread for the confirmation of name spelling and just to make sure that all of the information was properly understood by the AI. At the beginning of May, at the beginning of May, I emailed my older person with some very, very rough numbers for hiring an interpreter for these meetings. And I appreciate you for entertaining my horrible math. He then reached out to the mayor and asked what could be done. By the twentieth, I was told that there were audio aids available at each meeting by request. While this is decent, while this is a decent start, it's nowhere near enough. By a show of hands, how many of you guys have had a conversation with a deaf person in person or over text? Okay, that's a little reassuring, a little concerning, but... All right, if you have, then you know that they speak very differently than hearing people. They still speak English, but the sentence structure is vastly different. And facial expressions are a vital part of how deaf people communicate. So while audio aids like Hearing Loops or whatever amplifier you provide is good, the best solution would be to have an interpreter available in person and on screen for each meeting. Hiring someone for two to three hours a week can add up. And I know how some of you guys feel about using money to help people out. They're a little bit different than you. But I feel like this would be beneficial in the long run. And we have a great resource that's not even an hour away. Illinois School for the Deaf is the best place to get in contact with to start hiring an interpreter. I'm sure they have the many, many resources that exist to help deaf people on hand, such as the American Translators Association, the Registry, the Registry of Interpreters for the Deaf, or the State of Illinois Deaf and Hard of Hearing Commission and some freelance interpreters on speed dial. It might cost a lot, but everyone in Springfield deserves to have clear communication about what is going on. I've spoken to a few members of the deaf community in Springfield, and do you know how they feel? Isolated and alone. There's no safe space for deaf people in the Capitol. There's a blatant lack of care for the deaf community in this city. And it breaks my heart because less than, again, sixty minutes away are the tools we need to start fixing this and nothing is being done. I've emailed the mayor with no response. I gave her a link to the State of Illinois Deaf and Hard of Hearing Commission and a template of what the YouTube livestream could look like. I do have a little bit of history, so I know what the format could look like. Please don't brush this to the side. Please don't continue to ignore your deaf community. They want to be included. They want to be part of Springfield. Thank you. Have a good day.
Robert Fraser.
The lady that came up here tonight frequently visits the CSA program. And she is an example of many folks that have no idea what to do to take care or help themselves. So not only are they doing laundry and helping these people, we do the heavy lift in the work of trying to help people in, in every aspect of whatever they're going through. It happens on a daily basis. This is a result of the work that we put in every day. We identified a huge problem. We've implemented a plan by faith. And this change, we, this is the change we are witnessing. There is much more work that needs to be done. We need your support. Currently, we are welcoming one, over a hundred people a day. In fact, did a little digits from the last month, preliminary work. But over forty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-one loads of laundry was done. It is equivalent to approximately sixteen hundred loads of laundry per day. We served over fifty-two, five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five people. We processed over three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight loads of, pounds of laundry. As I said, these people are walking through the door and trying to take care of basic need such as laundry, leaving with the task completed onto the next challenge of the day. One of the things I wanted to point out, real quick, was the Business Journal. And I've said this before, but the top ten employers in this city are the state, hospitals, university and insurance companies from seventeen thousand to six hundred and fifty-two. How could we survive? How could we survive as a community with public entities being the top of the food chain of where people work? We need more things. We need more businesses. We need manufacturers and such on. Anyway, I know somebody that has a comprehensive plan that would put Springfield and Sangamon County on the map. Be in the top three of these numbers within a one-to-three plan. CSA has a unique opportunity for a workforce development program that is geared toward the non-degreed individuals that desire to work hard and earn the right to provide for themselves or their families at a livable wage. CSA itself is in need to hire twenty to thirty people to provide laundry service and workforce development and community resources right in the store. With your support, Mayor, and the city council, and our business community and the community at large, people and with the people washing and listening, this does not happen. We can't afford to, but we continue anyway. CSA needs you. Please support us. You see, one of our grossly underfunded community issues is our ignored, underdegreed population that arguably fifty-five to sixty-two percent of our workforce. These people have a desire to work but lack the understanding... I'm sorry, I lost my place. Lack to understand in how to be successful at it. Utilizing our degreed individual not as weapons, but as insiders, we can accomplish the great things here in Springfield and Sangamon County. Yes, we can have an immediate impact, but it is long, it's, it's the long game that we need to have a permanent game changer, including retaining our talent. So in closing, myself, I work by faith, not by sight, encouraging people themselves every day with their acts in two thirty-eight that we can have a positive impact on human beings every day. We just need to do better at that. We've got a lot of work to do. We can do it, guys. We can do it. I'm working out here tirelessly. I don't know how, the energy. I thank God for it. But I appreciate the time. I was able to get through most of the stuff that I needed to say. And I look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you, sir. What we've got? Let's see, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.